The August 28th Planning Commission and Historical Advisory Committee meeting to order. So first we'll do roll call.
Commissioner Zilich.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Jenkins. Oh, absent. Commissioner Sherd.
Present.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Present.
Commissioner Arashi. Commissioner Jensen.
Present.
Okay, so join me, we'll stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any public comment on non-agenda items?
Not have any.
Okay, I think we're going to move item two to item one. If you all agree.
Sheriff's encounter.
What?
Yep.
Agree.
It's agreed, okay, we can go to item one. Item two.
Thank you Commissioners, Wes Urban City Planner. Before you, item two is a review by the Historical Advisory Commission of a 480-square-foot trailer, if you want to put the slides up, shed, and a new stage awning and a gazebo at APN 012-096-006, which are accessory structures or will be serving the property at 1567 Huntune Street, which is the New Jordan Crossing Ministries headquarters, I believe. The historical advisory, this has been reviewed by the Development Review Committee already. It does have to go to the Historical Advisory Commission because you need to identify whether this is a contributing feature or not of the historic downtown, or whether it will detract from or be incompatible with downtown historic overlay. The shed, as I mentioned, is a 480-square-foot up there. Shed that has already been installed, but it's not been finalled, and it's still under review by the Building Department, I understand. Pre-manufactured structure that's moved into the driveway facing High Street. Come on you. Right there. And you can see the shed is located in one portion of the parcel, the proposed stage, covered stage, is located on, next to the road there, and the gazebo would be kind of in the middle of the parking area inside the fence. 100 amp electrical service has already been installed on the shed. And, let's see, what else? The applicant has stated that the shed structure will not be developed into living or office space, it'll be primarily used for storage. The Building Department needs to approve its use as a potential snack bar. They have a, have not finished reviewing the construction materials, and they're concerned that maybe that might not meet any standard for occupancy and might be suitable for storage only. The conditions, which are on page 84 of your packet, propose that the Building Department must approve any occupancy first, and that no utilities other than that the power be attached to the building, no water or sewer or any other utilities. Bill Legrone is here representing the applicant, may want to say something, staff recommends approval.
Do we have any public comments on this item?
We... Yes, we do, we have Brian Wong.
Okay, Brian Wong.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, as a neighbor to the project over here, we kind of like see what the group has done with the property over the long term, and what we've seen is they definitely did a lot of positive things for the area. So before the group started doing the work, we used to have a lot of break-ins, especially after the Honda shop closed, we had a lot of issues in the area. So since the group has moved in, they've completely renovated the buildings, and not only that, that building that was vacated by PG&E, we had numerous homeless issues, break-in issues, it was driving Dr. Rocky crazy. So after they moved in, they kind of like cleaned the area up, and I've been watching progress and the work, everything is very tastefully done, it's done with quality. So I've even walked by and surveyed what they did, and as a neighbor, I can't say that they're doing anything that would cause alarm to me or the businesses that we have in the area. So I'm glad that they're there, and they're doing nice things for that part of downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else?
We do not have any more blue cars.
Okay, does the applicant want to speak?
I should know. Thank you, Madam Commissioner, I appreciate the opportunity. Could you roll this up one photo, please? I just want to make sure you're aware of something. I created these photos and am going to build this, however, I'm not going to build that. I mean, I'm going to use a scissor truss system on this, so that it's going to have a 2 and 12 pitch on the bottom and a 4 and 12 on the roof, so that the bottom's not going to be flat like that, but I couldn't get the software to do it. It didn't recognize what a scissor truss was, I explained, you know, and I finally, after having a conversation with the computer monitor, I just gave up and said that I would come and make that correction, so that you were aware of what I was going to do with that. But it's going to be this, the color's going to be a little bit darker than what we have here, it's going to be a corrugated metal roof to match something similar to what you would see on Calwater across the street, and to match the hickory shed that's there already. We bought the hickory building, quite honestly, we got a little bit ahead of ourselves and acted too quickly on it, but as soon as we became aware of the fact that we needed to have more permitting than what we thought, we did apply for a permit for this, or begin the process in June 19. And the reason why I remember it, because it was a holiday and I'd never used the city system before, and I was just very satisfied that I could actually do it on a holiday, so it was great, I mean, so. And I have to tell you, too, that I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this project, I don't want to waste a lot of your time, but I have to bring it to your attention, if you don't know, you probably already do, but you've got an amazing building department. I mean, they have worked really hard to help us through this, even though, you know, this is going to be a little bit of a challenge, that building is, I mean, to get through the building process, but I believe we're going to get through it, and instead of just getting hard no's and things like that, you know, we've had very good, robust conversations about what we can do to work to get to yes, so that we have an appropriate structure for what we're desiring to do. The vast majority of the time, this structure will be nothing more than a storage facility, but during like Salmon Festival, Feather Fiesta Days, things like that, we're going to open up the area here, make it a family-friendly area where we're going to have small concessions, we're not going to be doing nothing ridiculous or anything, there'll be no cooking in it, nobody's going to live in it, there's going to be no water hooked up to it, no sewer, anything like that, it's just going to be used on those few days a year for, to facilitate that, and then the rest of the time, it's going to just be storage for typically holiday decorations and things like that that we may have. So, any questions you have, I'm more than happy to answer.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
Okay, now we'll just have staff discussion, anything you want to add? Just let Commissioners talk about it? Close the public hearing.
I guess I have one question, I don't know if this is for Mr. Legrone or for staff, but the buildings and the facilities that are going in, none of the trees are coming out with any of this, are they? Are they...
No, Pastor Spear is actually an arborist, who is the CEO of Jordan Crossing, so we only take out trees that are either invasive or are causing some sort of root structure problem, and we do have a couple trees that are close to the building where the roots have surfaced, and we have high voltage power that comes in there to feed the transformer and gas lines, so those are being evaluated, we have no intention of removing any trees at this time. The only ones that we may remove, other than those, would be the ones on the, that are close to the curb, that are causing the sidewalk panels to come up, but we would work with the city on that, but we have no intention of removing all the trees, that's part of the beauty of the area.
Yeah, because I mean, my opinion on the historic value of the property, it's the trees that are there, so that's why I was asking about them.
Yes, sir.
Bill, are you going to fix this to the ground?
Yeah, actually, the, you're talking about the shed?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have to use a system similar to what you would see with a modular home, where it's going to have to be screwed into the ground, or, you know, that's one of the things, Commissioner Arce, that I'm trying to figure out, is where do you get somebody that would have a big enough thing to drive in that kind of a thing, but mobile home companies do it all the time, so I'm sure I just will contact...
433A Foundation.
Yeah, we're going to use those, it's actually built for that, the straps actually go underneath the skids, there's a space where you can put the straps through, and then bring them across and anchor them into the ground.
And are you going to put skirting on the block, once that's done, skirt it, so you don't see the blocks?
Yeah, what we're going to do with it is, the blocking on it is not right right now, I mean, there's too much wood in it, there's, it's just not done properly, so we're going to reset it, we're going to do that, and then we will skirt it, and we've had some conversations with the Building Department, and we're still involved in those conversations about if we have to put on a ramp or not, I mean, so we are going to do more, but it will absolutely be skirted, so that it don't look like, because it does look like a mobile home sitting there, but it's actually not, it's one of those hickory sheds.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Just a suggestion, I do know that PG&E has been amicable in the past, especially to nonprofits, and they put in the guide wires all the time, so they have the equipment to just screw that right into the ground.
That would be fantastic.
So, you might reach out to them, if you have a contact PG&E.
Right. Well, I know everybody looking at me probably believes I can do it, based upon the size of my arms and things like that.
So do we have discussion? Any comments with the Commissioners? I mean, I do, but I have to make sure everyone else goes first.
Well, throw your discussion points out there, and we'll rebuttal.
I am a passionate person, resident and business owner in downtown Oroville, I love the buildings, I, the architecture is incredible. I also know, so I want to say, the use, I'm so for. I absolutely agree with what Brian said, we're getting life on that corner and that end of downtown, and it's absolutely fantastic, and I'm 100% on board with that. But, downtowns are extremely hard to maintain and preserve, and they slowly die, and they die by bringing in architecture that does not fit and does not enhance the surrounding area. I am not for manufactured shed-type structures being in our downtown historic district at all. They exist, so the fact that I'm against it doesn't mean that it is in the code, but they do not contribute to our historic integrity, they do not enhance what we're doing, they take away a little. We have a lot of them at the Bird Street School, right in front of the beautiful church that's been there since, I don't know, over 150 years. So to me, I feel like we have to tenaciously keep our standards high, and we have to fight for every little thing that we do, it really has to be contributing. So that is, just wanted to be straightforward with my opinion, I'm not against the use, but I am not for this type of structure in our historic downtown at all.
Is it the type of structure, or is it the appearance of the structure more than anything?
These type of structures obviously look like modular prefab...
Right, but you could, you could put facades on anything, like for instance, you could leave the T-111 siding on this, and you could put something on the outside, you could put knotted pine from top to bottom and clearcoat it, and it would look like an old cabin.
Or a gable on the roof with a little porch-type thing to break up the architecture on it, so, yeah.
I honestly feel, too, like our code is too weak, and I think there's a mistake in the code, that I don't know if we can bring that up, but it says that we're supposed to have a turn of the 20th century theme. That's not the theme, it's the 19th century theme, so it's very different. So I don't feel like we have the bones here, I would like for us to revisit this and make this stricter, where these type of modular buildings are not allowed, just to keep the integrity out. But yes, I hear what you're saying, but T-111 siding, that does not fit, the low roof pitch...
The thing is, if we're going to go in that direction, we have to tighten up our historic district, because this portion of our downtown doesn't have any of that legacy left. I mean, it's, I mean, this, these buildings in this portion of downtown are, well frankly, not really out of character for the surrounding buildings.
Except for City of Paris, right.
Well, they're, I mean, they're kind of on the next block and over, and in the area that's definitely our historic core.
Correct.
Whereas this building isn't in an area that I would consider our historic core.
I agree with you, I agree with you on both those counts, but I still feel we need to keep the standard high and be tenacious, because historic downtowns go away, and they never come back.
I agree, and I for one, am definitely, definitely on board with, in a later discussion and a later time, expanding the historic preservation zone, because to me, in my opinion, it's way too small. It only encompasses like five square blocks, that's all it does, and I think that needs to be expanded quite a bit. In this case, this building, as far as style anyways, I don't know what age the PG&E building is, I believe 70s or 80s, and it's right next to doctor's offices that are fairly comparable with pitched roof and such. It's hard to, it's hard to antique this building in between, because it says right in the code, they're supposed to look fairly alike. I just don't know how to stop, or how to, how to help you help the situation in this particular case.
I think we need to update the code, and also the very fact that this has to come to the Historic Advisory Committee means that our input means something.
Yes.
And that is something that we're trying to do, and that is our passion for our historic integrity.
Hundred percent, and I think if this was in more of the historical preservation area, we would have a lot more horsepower.
Right.
I would like to say that, you know, when I hear the neighbors such as Brian come up and say, hey, this has actually helped the homeless, one thing that's, one thing I like about our downtown, and my friends that come from Chico and here, they say, I like your downtown because it doesn't have homeless. Well, that's because of people like Sheriff Legrone here, that would actually do things like this, and help out, and get our downtown, because guess what? You may not look to look at this, but I don't like the look of homelessness in our downtown, which can do that, and it sounds like these guys are doing a good job of evacuating those people and making our downtown safer. I think that'll do a better job of getting people downtown, feeling like they can bring their families down there and feel safe, so, that's just my opinion.
Well, absolutely, I agree, use is super important, you have to have life and people down there, and that's what's happening at that corner at all of those facilities, and I'm extremely thankful for that. Do we have a motion, or do we have any more discussion?
I would like to make a motion to approve this, this structure for downtown, because I think it'll benefit the downtown and make it, and like I said, if we need to make it look nicer or more aesthetic, I think we can do that, and I actually don't think it looks, compared to the buildings around it, that bad.
Well, it matches the buildings that are around it.
If you approve it, so...
We can't do it.
If you approve this, you can't change the building, so, I mean, shouldn't this have gone to DRC, or the Historic Committee?
The DRC has reviewed this project, and you are the Historic Committee.
DRC did review, did?
Did.
And what'd they say?
They...
We gave a very long list of determinations that needed to be found and filed, as far as the building codes, what they wanted to use it for and everything else, but as far as the actual historical, the look of the building and the fit of the building, that had to come to this committee.
Right.
We, we...
We were dealing with all the stuff where he came up with.
Correct, we deferred to the Building Department as far as what it could be used for, not occupied, the foundation wasn't correct, you know, there was a lot of things, so development-wise, it had a long list of things it needed to be attributed to, but as far as historic, the beauty of it, or how it looks, it had to come to this committee for that.
Okay, so, all right, so DRC, all right.
There's a very long list, like he said, they're still working with the Building Department to even be able to use this for what they want to use it for.
Okay, but if we approve the use for it now, then we're not changing the facade of the building, right? Can't change that.
Correct.
So, if you want to change that look, you'd have to go back...
You have to condition it tonight.
And the only, the hard part about doing that, because we looked at that at the DRC as well, is the fact, its particular architecture type matches the PG&E building on one side, it matches the doctor's offices on the other side, and across the street, like he just mentioned, they're going to change the roof to the type of roof that's across the street, but the Calwater building, it's, it matches everything in its immediate surrounding. If they were putting this next to the City of Paris building, it'd be a whole different, whole different discussion.
Right.
Or down where the old Sierra Club was, in that empty lot, or something like that, whole different discussion. But per the code, this has to match what is in its immediate vicinity, and according to the DRC Committee, it, it did.
And honestly, driving around, I barely see the thing, with the trees and the fence and the stuff everywhere, that's location, so...
Yeah, to me, the historic character of this particular corner is in the older trees that are here, and as long as those are being preserved, I'm perfectly good as being on the Historic Committee of approving it.
So then do we have a second? Because we have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, okay.
Okay, we're going to vote.
You gotta turn it on. Motion passes. Motion passed for five yes, one no, and one absent.
What would we do about changing this section of the code and the 20th century theme, and also maybe the idea of not having modular homes in downtown? What are my chances of getting any of that done?
The Planning Commission can at any time give staff direction to start working on that.
I would personally like to, I personally would like to give staff direction to work on expanding the historical preservation of our downtown, I mean, especially with new industry and new business coming in that are going to be expanding our downtown, I would want to make sure that we do our best to preserve as much as we possibly can now, and extending the borders of that small little five-block area.
Out to the lots, the empty lots and stuff.
Out as far as we can, to try to preserve as much as we can.
I think that's the direction we should be going.
Yeah, I think that's good, and it could actually end at the City of Paris building.
It could, I think it needs to go up, I think it needs to go up to Myers to the railroad tracks.
Yes, on that side, but yes, we could draw it. Okay, so, we have a consensus that we would like staff to look at that.
Yes, please.
Pending that.
That's a good idea, thank you.
And then the 20th century themed thing just drives me nuts, so I don't know how we could ever go back and see, how did that get in there, was it supposed to be 19th century? Like, just doesn't make sense to me.
It's because most of the buildings are that, are that era.
But not in downtown, this is, no, they're not...
20th century, yes.
But the 20th century goes to 1999, and so that's not the style we want to copy.
Are you talking about the 21st century? Because we're talking about the 20th.
The 20th century is 1901 to 1999, so...
But it only says, it only, right now, Warren, it only says 20th century, which is all the way through 99.
It say early?
No, so see, it need, we need to make it 19th and early 20th, or we just need to clarify that.
It actually says turn of the century theme.
That's what it was, thank you.
Turn of the century theme, yes.
I know you said something like that.
Oh, turn.
Which is circa 1900.
To what? Okay.
Circa 1900 or so.
Okay, so that is...
And the historic overlay is, is fairly large, it covers 30, 40, 50 blocks, so...
So none of these buildings on this corner match with that, turn of the 20th century?
No.
I mean, I understand, they're all already there. Okay, I missed the turn of. Okay, so we're done with that, and now we're going on to item one. We, the, the use permit for the solar farm, and who's presenting that, Wes?
Yes, bear with me, I'm going to go through this fairly slowly.
Okay.
What you have before you is use permit number 25-12 by Butte Renewable Energy, Inc., to create about 100 acres of solar panels in two different locations in the city, and on six portions, parcels, or portions of those parcels. Can you go all the way to the top? So there, that small picture there, if we can enlarge it, shows the locations, proposed locations. The top area is along 7th Avenue, near the PG&E Assessment Yard, which is right, right here, near Trinity River Log Deck, which is right here, Odin Marshaling Yard, which is here, and these parcels are currently vacant but disturbed. The bottom site is on the Coppers Superfund Site. Each of them is about 50 acres, and so the entitlement would include the two locations with battery storage areas within each site plan, power lines serving likely industrial customers, some of which are represented on these site plans, some of which still have to be developed, and then findings to approve a barbed wire fence that is eight feet high with three rows of barbed wire, and a variance to exceed the maximum 30% floor area coverage for solar panels, which is limited in our code. So the first site is on three parcels on South 7th Street. Got to zoom out. That one, if you can make that smaller. On both sides of 7th, across from the other heavy industrial activities that I told you The second area is on Coppers Superfund Site, as you know, if you scroll up to the one above, and that's the layout of it. They are purchasing the land on Coppers from the current owner, and they are leasing the land on 7th Avenue from the current owner. So, any of the activities on Coppers there require a review by the Department of Toxic Substances Control, substances, and US EPA, which is typically a 30 or 60-day review process. We've had two calls and conversations with these agencies, and the applicant and the city are working out exactly what they need to review and when. So areas of interest include potentially depths of fence posts, any power poles that might be installed, and we're assured that there won't be any power poles on the Copper Site, and not altering any drainage on the site. These are all required in a land use covenant that was executed in, I think, 1993, and so we are working with these agencies. Applicant intends to put, to set concrete pads on top of the soil, stabilize them, not dig into the soil or anchor them in any way, they are floating, and then build the solar panels on top of those. So, and then the electrical cables going in between would all be above ground, so there's no actual digging proposed on the Copper Site.
Can I add into that, that they're going to be building all of those concrete slabs off-site, so there won't be any water, any drainage issues, so everything will be built off-site and then brought in and assembled on the site?
So the variance has to do with the 7th Street Site, if you could scroll down to that one. In your packet, on page seven, I believe, or eight of your packet, the applicant has calculated what the lot coverage is, the actual area that is covered by solar panels on each parcel. As I mentioned, the co... As I mentioned, the code requires a 30% maximum, or 20 acres, whichever is less. The maximum coverage on any of the parcels, the densest, is 38% coverage. Actually, staff isn't too clear on why the 38% coverage limit exists. My guess is that the limit assumes the panels will power other onsite facilities. And therefore, you could only limit the coverage of solar panels on such a site. But that's not the case here. This is a totally industrial property. No other structures will be built on the site other than the battery storage areas. And so the, in any case, the entire project meets the 40% floor area ratio coverage maximum. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve this variance. The Copper Site itself does not need a variance because our municipal code allows higher densities on contaminated properties at the discretion of the Community Development Director. Let me talk a minute about environmental review. We've had some concerns come up today about the proposed SEQA exemptions for this project, for the two parts of this project. And if I can call your attention to the blue piece of paper that has the revised recommendations on it by staff. So far, we are recommending that the SEQA exemption is certified by you for the 7th Avenue Site. Both areas, the area is previously disturbed, it's flat land, no biologicals, tree, or other concerns. It's a passive use, it's less intense than has already been approved in our general plan. And there's not a lot of employment, or noise, or any other environmental concerns. The site itself is former mine tailings. It's been graded and regraded and used at various times for temporary uses. The last time it was graded was to remove hiding places for homeless. But now there are some piles on site, so applicant would have to regrade and re-level it to make it useful. So we believe that this is exempt under SEQA. And so we are asking you to approve the SEQA certificate of exemption for this portion of the project. We've had a couple of questions come up today. One is by DTSC that told us that SEQA exemptions or categorical exemptions do not apply to hazardous waste sites that are on the, the list, the Cortesi List of hazardous waste sites. So we have to take that back and review that. We also have a letter that we received about five, or four o'clock this evening, from Adams Broadwell. And there is someone here that, from Adams Broadwell, who will probably testify to that issue. And so we are recommending that you approve the use permit for the Coppers portion contingent on you being able to certify an EIR, a negative declaration, or a notice of exemption at some time in the future while we work out what is the appropriate SEQA document for that. Ideally, we would work that all out, get whatever studies and documents are needed, done and completed, and come back to you in September with that, if possible. So that is our proposal there.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
Well, I'm not, I'm not done yet.
Oh, you're not done? Just only that? Okay.
It's only quarter.
Really?
The nearest non-industrial receptor, because the fence is going to be eight feet tall with nine and a half feet with the barbed wire. The nearest non-industrial receptor is the backside of the Walmart plant. It's over 500 feet away. So we don't believe that that location would locate, would generate any significant visual impact at all. Note also on the drawings that the building department must review the fence plans as well because of its height. So that'll all get covered. Landscaping in the 7th Street area is required to be installed and maintained along the frontages, which is consistent with our standards. Generally outside the fence line and within the 60-foot 7th Avenue right-of-way. It's expected to be minimal, since this is a heavy industrial area with long frontages already. May, the landscaping may end up being something likely put at Sierra Pacific Industries along the fence line, and currently also exists on 7th, along the log deck and the other, the other fence areas. We hope it'll look a little better than the landscaping that's there now. And the landscape plan review will be part of the building plan application process. Coppers would only need landscaping on the frontage on Baggett Marysville Road, the 100 feet or so that they have. The proposed conditions are in the resolution, they're starting on page 65 of your packet. I just highlight a couple of them that I've not talked about already. The battery storage areas will need to be reviewed and detailed better than they are now. But we typically would do that at the building plan stage. By the fire department, we will line them up to review it. And ideally, we'll give the fire department a little more time to review any hazard issues there. The DTSC and EPA have said that they need to review the civil drawings. And applicant is going to work to provide those earlier than maybe building plans in the middle so that the 60-day review by EPA can be met. The applicant does want to start construction by December 31st. There is a tax advantage for doing that. And so we're working very hard with them to get this project underway. Applicants are here to testify and to answer any questions you may have. It's this row of gentlemen here in the front. And they include Ben Talbot, Michael Spencer, Doug Lindgren, Les Day, and.
Craig Hammond.
Craig Hammond, sorry. There are also others from agencies that may wish to testify. I don't know, they just may be listening. We've had conversations with the Air Quality Management District, DTSC, and EPA. So staff recommends approval of the revised recommendation. And again, I would remind you that that's subject to the ability to certify an appropriate environmental document, whatever that may be, for the Coppers portion of the project.
I may add one more thing. I'm sorry if I missed this, but the, one of the reasons they haven't submitted a site plan is because we're waiting for the DTSC's consultant to give them the exact location of the wells so they can make sure that they have a 10-foot path and 10-foot clearance around all of the wells, so they have access to them constantly. Because testing will continue, and they're going to provide a key, or a pad, or a code, whatever it is they have to the lock, so that those testings can happen on their schedule.
Anything else? Are you done?
Thank you.
So do we have any public comment on this?
We do have one blue card.
Okay.
We have Kevin Carmichael.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Kevin Carmichael, and I'm here on behalf of Citizens or Responsible Industry, whose members may be adversely affected by the potential health and safety hazards and environmental impacts of this project. Now, the staff report asks that this commission approve the project entitlements pursuant to a now bifurcated exemption under SEQA Guidelines, Section 15183, based on the assertion that the project is consistent with the EIR for the city's general plan. This assertion is not supported by substantial evidence, as is required by SEQA. Section 15183 allows agencies to forego environmental review for projects that are consistent with a certified EIR for a general plan, except as necessary to evaluate whether there are project-specific significant impacts which are peculiar to the project or project site. And I think we can all agree that this is a peculiar project. In this case, none of these, this project's specific impacts were studied in the general plan EIR, which was a program-level EIR. And the staff report lacks any analysis of impacts peculiar to the project or the project site. Furthermore, the staff report does not identify any policies or standards applicable to this project that will substantially mitigate any project-related impacts. Citizens Air Quality and Health Risk Expert Dr. James Clark found that this project and the site-specific conditions, such as those presented by development on contaminated soils at the Copper Superfund Site, and also by the proposed installation of battery storage systems prior to any review or analysis by the fire department. These pose significant potential health risk impacts to construction workers, and they require analysis and mitigation in an EIR. Additionally, the staff report fails to analyze future phases of the project, including the battery storage. And now with this bifurcated approval of, of the exemption, commits the city to piecemealing under SEQA, which is verboten. So the staff report states that the approval of the project will enable BREI to deliver a fully-integrated phased renewable energy system that begins with high-capacity solar and battery storage, and transitions to a hybrid microgrid incorporating biomass baseload generation. Failure to consider all phases of the project as the whole of the action in making a SEQA determination violates SEQA by failing to identify impacts from the project as a whole and constitutes improper piecemealing. Citizens urges the commission to remand the project to staff to prepare an EIR for the entire project.
Time is up.
We do not have any more blue cards.
Okay, so would the applicant like to speak?
Good afternoon, everyone. So just a couple of points, particularly on, on the phasing. This is an application for a solar plant. The future phases are completely separate, and they are all completely interdependent of each other.
You have to speak up, buddy.
Yeah, so the phases are completely independent of each other. So should the committee approve this solar plant and then not seek to address future phases? This solar plant works completely independently and within its own rights, okay? So there's no issue and no requirement to do the future phases. We will apply for those in future as the needs develop, as the demand develops, and as the economy and opportunities around Oroville develop accordingly. But the solar plant should act independently on its own. We do and have looked at also the requirements around the exemptions. And we have looked at and addressed that it's more of a statutory streamlining process. And there's documentation and correspondence which will be providing, which set out all of the steps that we consider are required, and I know that the councilmen have looked at this as well. So in terms of the analysis of the SEQA guidelines, there's a lot of data we'll be able to provide on that. And I believe the council is doing that independently as well. And you have the opportunity to review each of those steps. That was all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Do we have questions of the applicant?
No.
Does anyone else want to speak? I need that, okay. Okay, so we'll just close it and have discussion among commissioners.
Well, I guess I have a question for staff. So I'm looking at the new recommended approvals, and it's talking about approving the use permit for the Coppers portion subject to later date certification of anything appropriate to SEQA. Are we jumping the gun on that by approving a use permit without considering SEQA yet?
Yes.
What's?
Yes.
Okay.
But I thought we're approving it conditioned upon.
Yes.
We have both the DTSC and the, and.
I'm going to say I'm hesitant to approve a use permit with, on a Superfund Site without SEQA. I'll say it that way.
So you would remove the recommendation number five from that?
Yeah, unless somebody made a, said something to convince me otherwise, that's my, that's my gut reaction to that.
Staff concurs with that.
I guess I'm not clear on it. Because we're saying that we would give them the use permit, so then they don't have to come back here, right, for the use permit? Is that the benefit?
Well, now what that would mean would be that we would only approve the 7th Avenue portion of the project, and then approve or discuss the Coppers portion in September, hopefully at that, at that Planning Commission meeting.
So how would that affect their timeline and what they're looking at doing? Because if we push it to September, so, yeah, would they be able to make their December deadline?
You'd have to ask the applicant that.
Well, because, so, so my thing is, this has to go to SEQA, according to this. If we make a motion, if we made the motion to approve this, this is going to SEQA.
Yeah.
So if we go ahead and say go ahead, and then they, then they come back and SEQA has a problem, then it's not going to move forward. So I, I don't have any issue. It's basically saying, it's not saying that staff will decide to send it or not to send it. It's basically saying that it is going to SEQA, and they're going to wait for the proper SEQA document before they move forward. If this was up in the air, I would also share Warren's concern, but this is stating that it is going to SEQA regardless.
That's correct.
It has gone to SEQA. Both, both parts of this project have gone to SEQA because it is a discretionary project. Staff feels that, given the new information, that we are comfortable for the exemption under 15183, the categorical exemption for the 7th Avenue portion of this project. Much less so for the Coppers portion of this project. And would, we are, we are working with our city attorney in order to get this all, all figured out. The Planning Commission has the option of doing a straw vote and waiting to do the whole thing until we get the proper SEQA documentation for the whole project as well.
I would like to hear from the applicant as to why, how it would affect them, how we go on this, if that's okay.
I have, Wes, this PG&E letter, did they get back to you on this?
Not yet, no.
So they haven't, do you need their approval? Jason, to be, I mean, what do they need to give you?
No.
Anything?
My understanding of the letter is that they are evaluating the project for any impacts to their systems or to their facilities. And this is sort of a discussion of what we would have to do if there are impacts. What the applicant would have to do if there are impacts to their facilities. That's the way I read that letter.
Okay, so then, so they're, this is not a, they don't care which way it goes on the use permit if, but if they find an issue or something, it has to be addressed at a later date, is that what you're saying?
But by allowing them to have the use permit, we're not facilitating them to ignore the letter.
Okay, so we'll have the applicant come up and discuss how this would affect you.
Yeah, the, the use permit is, it's contingent on all those decisions. You're absolutely right. So it's, it will defer to the points of SEQA at a later date, so the use permit is needed for that. The reason why the timeline is important, 31st of December 2025, the. The reason why the timeline is important, 31st of December 2025, the IRA 2022 Act of the ITC Tax Credits for Solar Developments reduce significantly. That is a 40% opportunity, 40% of the entire CapEx cost can be offset by an investment tax credit, okay? If we fail to achieve the 31st of December deadline, our CapEx costs will increase exponentially, okay? That increases the cost of the plant, which is increases the cost of the energy price, which we end up having to charge to customers, and it affects the viability of the project because, at the moment, the ITC tax credits have created a slight increase as well in the supply costs of solar. So we end up in, being in a, between a rock and a hard place, it's a difficult place. So we need to start construction this year, and we need the use permit to be given to enable that, that process to proceed. The timeline, if you think about 31st of December, we will need to get all our ITC application documentation in. By November, we need to be started construction. In October, we need to be doing the finalization of the, the financial close for the project, which means by September, we need to be showing the use permit, the building permit, and all, all the qualifications and environmental signups. So we need to work really hard during September to get all that done, but we need the use permit issued conditionally, yeah, contingent upon those findings, and we have done a lot of work since these letters have arrived just today. We've already set out a clear roadmap, and the council have been also working very hard to set that out as well, and we can see that there's a clear path which you can follow, which will enable that compliance under your statutory streamlining, not absolute exemption. It's a different process, and that will be set out in writing as well.
We did, during the meeting that we had this afternoon with CalA PA and the DTSC, they had, each of the, each department had their attorneys on the call, and we had our attorney on the call, and Michael made his, they did say that that 15183 was probably not going to be an appropriate exemption, but that there are, there does appear to be a pathway where we can go through the SEQA, go through the SEQA process and still find it to be categorically exempt, or exempt, or mitigated neg deck. So we feel that we can do this with, before the time we would have to come back to planning commission in a month, and if we can't, then we would go to a Phase 1.
And see, I'm, I'm confident that it's going back to SEQA, and we're going to get the correct documentation before they get to build it. Essentially, we're just saying that you can build solar panels here, and then they have to still follow the list of issues that they have to go through, which is SEQA, EPA, whatever may come in the future.
Correct.
So I'm, I'm fine moving forward this personally, because now, now if we were just trying to say, "Well, you know, SEQA doesn't matter," that's a whole different thing, but we're not saying that. So staff is going to give it over to SEQA, the applicant's going to work with them, and I would like to see something done with the Copper Superfund Site, since I've lived in Oroville since the 70s, and I would definitely like to see something done with that property. So if as long as it's going through the proper channels, and staff is saying that it is, then I trust staff, and I'm fine moving forward with it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion, or you think we can have a motion?
Wes, again, I go back to this PG&E letter. So their timeline is they have to start, I understand you have to start construction this year?
You have to be complete by December 31st.
No, not complete, they have to start.
Be the territory start construction.
Oh, good. Maybe that's because it's commercial?
On both sites. Can PG&E stop this?
This is independent from PG&E.
I'm sorry?
This is independent from PG&E, it won't be going into the grid.
No, but I'm, but this is talking about PG&E needs to approve, you know, they have gas lines, they have gas mains, they have things that have, they get PG&E people on site, so I know they don't move relatively quickly. What's to prevent PG&E from stopping this without their blessing?
I'd like to say that if they do stop it, that's a different issue, and that would be something we'd have to do, it'd be separate again from the, as Commissioner Zilic has said, that this is just approving that we can, that they can put solar on that site. So if, and since they are not digging anything except for fence posts, it's unlikely that we'll have an issue with that going forward.
They're not connecting the PG&E's grid.
Right.
So PG&E doesn't have anything to do with it.
Well, I think Councilmember Rossi was saying that they were, PG&E may have some things in the ground that, that might be an issue as they're, as they're trenching or something like that, but there won't be any trenching. So even the, even the power lines are going to be on the ground, they're going to be go above ground, and this was all designed to appease or to, when we met with, with CalA PA and DTSC last week, they said, "You guys can dig, you can trench down, you can put your power lines in the ground, they're only going to be down about 24 inches or whatever it is, you're not going to hit that five feet, so that's fine, don't worry about it." And they said, "We don't want to mess with that, we're just going to put our power lines on top of the ground, cover them with a, with a chase, and then call it a day." So, so there really will be no disturbance of the ground, no trenching, and no, then should be no concern from PG&E about affecting their, their underground lines.
When I, when I read the PG&E letter, because I went through the packet, I, I did read it, and I took it with a grain of salt, simply because PG&E doesn't have a lot of competition in the area, and I think what they're looking at is the future, and they may want to see engineering drawings and such moving forward if the plan changed and they wanted to tie into the grid or something like that. I think a 40-megawatt competitor that's sitting on the edge of a town that's going to start growing could have something to do with the letter as well.
Sure, no, I understand.
My personal opinion, just saying.
So the, my issue is more with the property on Seventh Street, because that's, what, 50 acres of commercial industrial land?
The left side of that is Zone C2 industrial, I'm sorry, heavy commercial.
Right.
And the backside of all of that is against the dismantling yard and a number of other industrial types of properties that are also in that same C2 intensive commercial zone. So it's, it's not very far off from industrial zoning at all.
But would we be taking that out of potential future development for industrial use or...
Any of this land would be potentially taken out for future other uses, yes.
Well, I'm not worried about the coppers land, I'm more concerned with Seventh Street land. I mean, you know, the potential loss of income to the city, to the county from revenue, right? I mean, that's 50 acres of usable land that could be developed, correct?
Well, it's land that hasn't been developed.
What's that?
It's land that hasn't been developed.
Which is to say that it wouldn't be developed.
Because there's been no market for it.
I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue with the coppers land, I don't even care about SEQA, because that land, you know, that's the best use for that, for coppers land is this. I just don't know if Seventh Street's the best use for this land, or for this use. That's my thought.
My, my thought, because I agree with you, Glenn, I, I looked at this, and I looked at property values in the area just real quick, because I knew this was coming up. So I looked at property values, and I looked around the area, and then I thought about it, if you, if you put this right in the middle, because it is in the middle, there's developable, there's land that can be developed all the way around it, essentially, that's, that could be developed for large industry. The number one issue with industry here, such as with the old Louisiana Pacific, is the cost of the power in that area.
No, I don't disagree.
If you throw this right in the middle of it, and you can tell everybody who's bordering it that they could get a reduction in their pow, in their, it, it might encourage development on the rest of it, is how I, is how I was looking at it.
If that's exactly, if that's the way it's going to go, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know that's the way it's going to go, I just looked at it from that standpoint when I was looking at the values of the property around it, and then I looked if there was any inquiries, any potential sales or anything, or if anybody even looked at it, and I couldn't find anything in a very long time.
That, that is where this is headed, is providing power to the neighbors.
So I need to bring something up here. We have on our recommendation adoption of Resolution 2025.16, as stated here, we're going to have to change this around because, as it's stated, it's referring to a resolution about findings for both the cop, both the Seventh Avenue and the coppers site, and so I think we need to modify this so that it's only referring to the Seventh Avenue portion. Am I reading that correctly before we get ourselves in trouble?
Yes, all of this came up today, so we would have to modify that.
So do we have a motion?
If you're calling for a motion, then I'll motion to move forward with, with it as the most latest agendatized.
Could we, could, could I ask that we vote on, on Item 5 separately?
Can I make a suggestion as well? Can we make the entire approval contingent on our city attorney weighing in on all these SEQA issues that got raised today?
I would love to hear from the city attorney on any, all of this, I was hoping that, I would be much more comfortable if I could hear from the city attorney.
So it's my understanding that this was going to be with the city attorney and SEQA and everybody from staff, that this, moving forward from here, it has to go through all that process.
He was on the call that we had this afternoon with their lawyers included, so three attorneys on the call, and there was, there was no opposition to the staff's, what we're, what we proposed here tonight, this is what we all came up with.
And that's, and that's why I, I'm willing to hold to my motion to go ahead and move forward, because they have spoke about it, and this still has to be approved by SEQA. If SEQA wasn't in here, then I would be different, but I'm, I'm saying that, unless, but I'm not going to make the motion yet, Warren, if you want to keep talking about it. I'm, I'm good with having discussion.
Given the discussion this evening, I'm going to suggest that the entire decision for the whole project get deferred to September, and the reason is because the, the question of bifurcating the project has come up, and that could potentially expose to some SEQA risk as well. This, this project has two very separate components, but it is one permit, one project. So I hate to do this, but I am going to suggest that we defer this and finalize any decision in September, or, or a special meeting before that, if, if that can all be worked out ahead of time.
Because, yes, come on up.
Yes, we were originally hoping to have this before the use permit in July, but we missed that opportunity, so it's moved to August. The stress on the potential of this project succeeding and being deferred by another month will be catastrophic to its potential future. So we really would express that having the use permit in place, subject and contingent upon determination by the city attorney and SEQA, and the steps that we've set out previously, we would strongly propose that that be put forward, that puts no one on this panel at risk, and places the professionals and the attorney to give their, their view and finalization on the point.
Thank you.
And, and that's why I was, that's why I was saying move forward with it, is because it's going to be in the lawyer's hands, the attorney's hands. All, all we're basically going to essentially do is just put the pause button, but the pause button's already been pressed because it still has to be reviewed. But I, but I don't want to overrule staff here either, because now Wes has a concern, so concerns are viable to me, so.
Well...
But who decides the bifurcation issue, it's attorneys, right?
The attorneys have to clarify that through SEQA, but it's the planning, the planning commission's decision ultimately.
I will, I will accept Pat's testimony that the city attorney has signed off on what you have recommended to us today.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm feeling comfortable.
Is your, is, is your resolution completed, or...
Yeah, I was thinking, do you need to say it again? Do you want to have the city attorney?
No, I need to re, I think I need to redo it.
Uh huh, I think.
Okay, so I need to be coached here a little bit, just to make sure, because we've, we've talked on so many points here, and I want to make sure this moves forward correctly for everyone. So my motion then is to move forward with staff's recommendation with the latest agendatized option that has been provided for us, contingent upon SEQA and contingent upon the lawyers coming, and the attorneys coming together and the project moving forward. Does that cover it, Wes? Okay, then that would be my motion that's on the floor.
And the resolution appropriately amended, because I think that we have to have some amendments on the resolution as well, but yeah.
To reflect that.
To reflect.
Right, so we need to make the, yep, okay, so add that to the end of it. Like I said, it's a long one tonight.
I just want to make sure our eyes are dotted.
No, 100%, we, we need to make sure it's correct, I, I don't want anything to come back on us at all. I just believe that moving forward, based on what Pat said, the lawyers already spoke about it, everything already moved forward, SEQA's still involved, all the Ts are crossed, all the Is are dotted, now we need to just say, "Yes, you can put solar panels here from the city's perspective, however, they still have to have all the lawyers involved, and they still have to get the permissions, and they still have to do everything." So that's why I'm saying I'm comfortable moving forward with this, because it's not like we're giving them written permission to just go do whatever they'd like. So do I need to re-say anything, or are we good?
I'm good.
You're good, okay.
Wes taking notes, though, you have all the...
We'll probably be emailing the next day.
You're on tape.
Okay.
We're on tape, so who's going to second it?
I will second it, yeah.
Okay.
Motion passed with 5 yes, 1 abstain, and 1 absent.
Now, thank you.
Thank you, guys. We've still got the tattoos.
Now, do we have commissioner reports? I have a concern I want to bring up, but I don't know if it's a report.
Sounds like a report to me.
I think you want to report something. We just lost our captive audience.
We lost our audience, that's okay. So I noticed on the City of Oroville Facebook page that they are looking, they're, they've purchased a home at 1510 Montgomery, the City of Oroville has, I know it, it's right there at Leah Court, cute little old, like, row work housing homes, and they've put out bids for contractors to fix it up, so they're going to fix it up to sell it. And this is the picture of it you guys would probably recognize, it's just a humble work row home, but given the fact that it's in the historic district, one thing that they're asking for is that all the windows be replaced. And on the front, they actually have one old double-hung that could be rebuilt. So I just think that as the historic downtown, this is one contributing feature to this, that the city should repair it. I don't know if, when you look at old buildings and they put in the new windows, it actually takes a lot of the character away.
I agree.
Tell me again what you're looking at?
The double-hung window right by the truck bed?
Yeah.
That's the only old window that's left, and you know how, it's double-hung and it's got, I mean, it needs to be fixed up.
They can match that double-hung with a reparation on it.
They could repair it. I've never seen a new one look as good, like, my husband always rebuilds them.
Yeah, I've, I've had to redo my window sills on mine, because they go all the way through the house.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's a pain to replace, but...
You can rebuild them.
But they do make the double-hungs that look pretty dang good on that, that are the modern, modern frame fixtures and all that stuff that go in there.
If this has the wavy glass, you can't...
Yeah, they are.
But I was just wondering, what are the standards for when the city owns a property in the historic district? And can we require some preservation? I mean, I've had residents commenting to me about it, some preservation of any historic features that are left on a home that the city owns and are flipping.
What is the address again?
1510 Montgomery Street. It's housing development... It's Housing Development Department. And they're getting a bid, and it all looks great, what they want to do, I just think we need to remember we live in a historic district.
Yeah, and the city may require the energy efficient windows, so.
But you, but there is a historic, but all the other ones could be that. But in historic homes, you are allowed to preserve the windows that are there. And then we've done it a lot by going to Cox Glass, you know, just repaint it, you have Cox Glass put the new glass in.
Yeah, he does my cartridges for me, too.
So there is a way to do it, I just want to see the city standard if there's, if we have an input here.
I'm not sure if we can require that people not have double pane windows.
It's just this one window.
I'm just not sure if we can do that at all, because by doing that, we're actually telling people that they cannot have an energy efficient home.
Natalie, you can see if they can design you a window like that.
They can.
Based the.
They do.
They can.
But wait, the way you restore it.
You can have it look just the same.
No, you can't.
Yes, you can. They can design anything.
I've done this a lot on buildings. I'm just saying that this is historic preservation. You don't just take something down and put a new something in. You maintain it and you preserve it and you bring it back.
Yes, but is that a bedroom window?
I don't know, I haven't been in the house.
Well, if it's an old house, does it mean egress, ingress, egress?
You know what, this has, this has, this has stone.
Anybody else to do with the permit?
Yeah, I'm sure that, oh yeah, they're going through all those standards.
Right, so if.
You don't have to redo all your windows.
Okay.
No, I mean, no one has to, that's not a requirement of remodeling a house.
That's true, it's not. That's true.
And this is also that big stone house, so I'm sure this is extremely efficient because of that stone all around it.
It's actually probably less efficient because of the stone.
Mine's not brick. I finally got my solar hooked up, so.
If I may, Natalie.
Yes.
I think what Natalie is saying, it's not that we require people to preserve historic windows.
No.
I think she's saying that because we're the city and we're the ones that own it, she's asking if we would do it as a city.
So if the new owner.
Well, the city owns the house. Yes, the city owns the house. They're hiring contractors to maintain it.
It's an intermediate thing, so right now you'd like the window left in there, and then if down the road somebody buys the house, they own the house, and they change out the windows.
They go, my electric bill's high.
Absolutely.
Right, you're just saying right now, intermediately, with the city owning it, you're asking if that window stays.
They need to restore the window.
Okay.
It's not, I mean, they have to, you know, it needs to be.
That better be disclosed when the city sells it to someone that they may not be able to change that window.
No, I'm saying they can. The new owner could.
No, we said they could.
It's just the city.
As the city owns a home, I just believe that their standards should be higher and be respectful of our historic history. But yes, it's a free country, do whatever you want to do with windows. I'm not taking away.
I'm hearing you, yes.
Thank you, thank you. I wasn't clear.
We will convey this.
Can I bring up another issue unless you're done?
Desire to Amy Bergstrom, our housing manager, who's in charge of this home.
I've looked at that house, it's a cute little house. Okay, yes, I am done with my report.
For future, on these developments like this, like this, you know, like on Seventh Street, did this go to DRC? Does this need to go to DRC?
It did, yes.
Why can't we, you know, I would like to see, you know, elevations, you know, I would like to see streetscapes, I like to, you know, not just, it's going to be a fence, blah, blah, I like to see street views, I like to see the overall picture, what it's going to look like, having, you know, five trillion solar panels out there. You know, I mean, it'd be nice to see what the city's going to require for landscaping, for a buffer, for mature trees, you know.
Better presentation, yeah.
In the Bay Area where I used to be, when they did these types of developments, or they did, you know, self-storage places, you know, they made them do these facades at the front, where it looked like a building, it looked very nice.
All the elevation.
To just go down the street and see hundreds and hundreds of solar panels in a chain link fence, it's not an attractive, it's not very aesthetically pleasing. So again, Coppers, that's the best thing for the Coppers plant. I don't care about SEQA on any of that stuff. I think SEQA's ridiculous. But on Seventh Street, and land that we're taking out of use, okay, I think solar's fine, but I think that we need to hold them to a higher standard of, let's see what the product is going to look like. Because if we don't, then the follow-through seems to be negative, doesn't happen. I remember when I was first on the commission, five years ago, we approved a guy to do a 60 by 100 foot shop on Oro Quincy Highway with the requirement that they were to take that old stone house that they had and do a building plan within 12 months. It's been five years, and there's nothing done. So there's a lack of follow-through with that. So if we're going to be, and this shouldn't have been, in my opinion, where they come to us and they're up against a gun on something this large, and they're, and they want it done because they'll lose their credit, this short amount of time, you know, that's not on us, that's on them, the applicant. Okay? So I don't ever want to feel like we have to, as a collective body, worry about their tax credit or what they need, we have to make sure what's best for the city. So, you know, and again, I'm not worried about the attorneys and the SEQA stuff because they're always going to do that. I, you know, Coppers has been a super fun site for, what, 60 years? Whatever it is, 50 years?
Probably 40, yeah.
Okay, so it's never going to be developed other than something like this, which is a great use for that site. But I'm just not so convinced that the Seventh Street site is the best use. We don't get, we get any revenue from this? The landowner is going to get plenty of revenue for leasing out 50 acres, but city, what do we get? Do we get any free power? Do we get any tax base from it? Any kind of income generated from it?
Did you not go on Monday night?
Tuesday night.
Oh, sorry.
I don't know what Tuesday, I don't know what Tuesday night was.
No, I wasn't there.
I'll do that on, I'll do that on staff report out part.
There was a whole presentation on it. I missed it, too, but I.
Okay.
On all the finished phases and stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that the city's gaining out of the entire process. They're going to put transmission lines in the ground, coming from this to all the local, all the local businesses or all the local industry around, and then they're going to give those lines to the city.
All right, and that's great.
So there, I'm just saying, there is, there is a lot of positives.
Well, good.
That are going to be coming from this.
That should be something that should be told. If I would have known, I would have went.
They're going to sell that.
But I did not know.
I was waiting for them to say something.
But I'm just, but I mean, I just think for future, when things go to DRC, just like this building from Jordan's Cross or wherever it's from, right? Okay, yeah, the other buildings around it, but if you want to make a change in historic district, you know, DRC is design review committee, right? If you don't like the design, send it back, get a new design, make it new something.
Well, it's not the whole committee or commission that's on the design review, it's only two of the members.
No, true.
Right, so we're held.
But those two people are on the planning commission, right?
Right, it's Terry and I.
And you guys can say, look, this is not going to fly in a historic district, get a different modular design, because they have them.
They already have it there.
Right? Why was that building already put there when it shouldn't have been put there?
Oh, that came up.
Okay.
That came up.
Did you find them for doing that? They got no permits?
Yes, they've been fined, they've got stop work orders, et cetera, et cetera. So there's been a long history of.
There was.
So it's more of a, you know, better to, easier to ask forgiveness than permission type of a situation with that.
So they were categorically stopped. Everything they wanted to do with the facility occupied, everything else, Rick stopped them from doing everything. He shut them completely down. And the DRC committee, when we looked at it, were held, yes, it is the design review committee. We can say, no, it can't be that color, no, it can't be that design, there are certain things we can say. But the bottom line is, when I looked at the requirements for the building, and I looked at the requirements for the code, it says it has to mimic the buildings that are directly around it. And, like I said, if you were next to the City of Paris building, or if you were somewhere where the Sierra Club burned down or something like that, it's a whole different thing. It's hard to tell somebody no when, first of all, they were already told no, they were stopped short by the building department, and they had to fix a lot, they still have a very long list of things they have to fix, very long. But the color of the building, the shape of the building mimics the buildings that are on either, on all three sides of it. So it's hard to just say, no, we don't like it, because it, I mean, what are you going to put it on?
Well, with our current code.
I mean, that's fine.
With our current code, yes.
Our current code.
So we need to change the code.
Either going to give the historic, the historic downtown's either got to have some teeth, or it doesn't.
And that's why I want to expand.
So if you wanted to, you got to change it.
That's why we're going to expand the preservation.
That's why I want to expand the preservation, because the preservation's a whole different set of rules with much stricter requirements to stick to.
So we're going to have staff look into that for us.
And again, I circle back to, you know, code enforcement with these buildings that are vacant, that are not maintained, you have out of area landowners that don't maintain these buildings, they don't take care of them. So, you know, it's, I don't know, that's just me.
That's your report.
I had a double espresso before I came, so I apologize.
You're good, you're good.
Now we're staff reports, right? Any other reports from commissioners? We're on staff.
We have two staff reports, and then Pat has his staff report. First up is Kylie Coop, our new assistant planner, and she has something to talk about.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. I just wanted to give you all a quick update on a zoning item that's headed to city council. As part of the ad hoc business advocacy committee's recommendation, staff is seeking council direction on how the zoning code classifies tattooing, permanent makeup, micropigmentation and related services. Currently, the code inconsistently classifies these uses and doesn't define newer services like micro tattooing. State law groups them all under tattooing, but from a zoning perspective, we're focused more on land use impacts. Staff is presenting three options to the council. First is to treat all pigment based services the same, with council deciding whether they're low or moderate impact uses. Second is no change, keeping the current classifications. And third is to create a new category for cosmetic pigmentation services to reflect the lower impact of services like permanent makeup. Staff is recommending option one for consistency with state law and ease of enforcement. Council direction will help us prepare a draft ordinance for future review. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about that. Thank you.
So you're recommending, you're amending, I get that, putting it all together, I agree. This is a tattoo on your eyebrow or eyeliner, then you go off and do a flower, and pretty soon you're doing a leg, and yes, this is a very natural progression. It should all be low impact, but, so hopefully that's the recommendation.
Is this what we agreed upon last, at the last meeting?
This what we struggled with?
About the permanent makeup, or no?
Right, this is it.
It's modified.
We were just trying to determine how you tell the difference between the two, basically, yeah.
So the easiest thing would be to put all tattooing in personal services low impact, because if we try to categorize it as times change and people are doing all different kind of beauty treatments, we're just going to be back here again.
Right.
So it's ridiculous.
The only way that we were really able to come up with anything was to just decide, yes, the equipment is smaller.
The size of the needles, yeah.
Exactly, that's how we moved forward last time, was it was different equipment for permanent makeup and micro tattoos and stuff that fades versus permanent tattoos.
And after staff discussing this with our code enforcement director and our chief of police, we found that there are no instances of concern from tattoo parlors or from micro, micro, or permanent makeup. So we're recommending to council that we, the staff recommendation is for the council to provide direction, but we're suggesting that we remove the use permit from both tattoo parlors and from permanent makeup.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we have business, we have salon owners, which is a great industry.
But we did put it.
And they can make more money, and we need them to be making money, so that's like the bottom line.
I'd rather have the tax revenue than chase them off with a $6,000 permit.
But what's our timeline now?
The city will weigh in, or the city council will weigh in, it will come back to the planning commission, because the codes need changing and all of that, and this commission has to adopt that.
The wheels of government grind really slow.
So we have to, so we're going to take it to council on the second?
Okay.
No.
September 2nd?
Yes.
Right, so Kylie, yeah, so Kylie wrote this report, we have it all wrapped up today, it's going to go on the second. If you look at the report, the staff recommendation is, the staff is suggesting that the council give direction to remove the use permit requirement, but there are two other options that we've put in there.
So essentially, on the second, they will vote to either send it back to the planning commission with whatever they're going to weigh in on, then we vote on it at the end of September, and then they vote on it again to make it, to enact it, correct? Or does it end with planning commission the end of September?
They have to enact it.
That's what I thought, so we're looking at November.
Okay.
It's a two-step, it's a two-meeting process at the council.
And this will go separately from what we've worked with you on with the use permits? Because that, or could that come to this council, to the planning commission next time, too?
All of the proposed ad hoc changes will come back to the planning commission in September, all the ones that have been discussed and recommended.
Oh, okay.
Whatever the council decides, it'll come back to us in September, and then it'll go back to the council for ratification later.
Well, plus you have a number of other things relating to landscaping and animal pet stores and such that will also.
We have a lot of.
There's a lot of things in there.
Okay.
Next up is James Fong, he's going to be talking about an opportunity that we're chasing. James is an intern here from Cal Poly for one month, and he's been very active with us, so he's been very helpful.
Hello, everybody. Like Wes mentioned, I'm your friendly neighborhood intern, and I'm just here to provide a quick update on the Feather Ranch project, which is proposed by the applicant, Stotley. This will be verbal, I do not have a staff report written yet, haven't gotten that experience just yet, but I'm just going to verbally explain this to you. And just to refresh everyone's memory, this is a 44.97 acre project located on Feather Avenue and 20th Street, which is right out by the airport, and it's designed with 172 single family homes to address local housing needs, including providing relief for displaced members from the Paradise and other local fires. And a note that I wanted to point out is that this planning commission did already approve the project over a year ago, so today's update focuses on the progress that's made since that time. And unfortunately, we know that this development will be impacting existing wetlands within the surrounding area by the airport, and thus this project requires compensatory mitigation. So in other words, every acre of wetland that's lost, we must create new functional wetlands elsewhere. And that's to comply with the state and federal, no net loss wetlands, no net loss wetlands policy, which is heavily enforced by agencies like Army Corps of Engineers, State Water Resources Control Board, and of course, California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So we've actually held past conversations with a potential partner named Resource Environmental Solutions, or RES for short, who are the engineers that will be constructing the new wetlands, but in the past they've expressed concerns whether the Oroville Airport property could actually support and sustain vernal pools and seasonal wetland creation. So specifically, their concern was whether the clay and the dirtpan layers within the soil were present within the region, so since then we've gone back and reviewed a lot of technical documents and historic data. And we found 1993 mitigation plan done by Jones and Stokes Associates confirming that the Oroville Airport property was in fact capable of supporting wetland creation either naturally or with minor engineering adjustments. Another 1999 report showed that as part of the city's airport runway expansion project in the past, the city had successfully created 5.29 acres already of wetlands with surplus. So this proves that the wetland creation is already feasible and effective within this area, so Stotley's situation is really similar to this one, the city had previously encountered in the past and successfully addressed, so we know there's a lot of potential here for wetland creation. Now, with this updated information, we've sent over the historic data, as well as our own analysis and evaluations to Resource Environmental Solutions, hoping to reestablish connections and move forward with creating wetlands for Stotley. And at this point, we are currently waiting for their response and partnership, and we'll bring back further updates as those conversations progress. Thank you.
Okay, so that's the first step, get the wetlands.
Yes. He is currently.
Another slow thing.
Yeah.
Something that.
Thank you, that was good.
This is something we've been thinking about and talking about for quite some time. James did a lot of really great research here in the last week, and he's learned a lot, obviously, this is new to him, so that was a pretty impressive little bit there.
Yeah.
The, we've been, Wes and I have been working on this, trying to figure out a solution for vernal pools and how the city might help developers with that issue, so I think James kind of took us to another level here, so we appreciate that.
Thanks, James.
Appreciate it.
So I just wanted to report out that we did have a meeting on Tuesday night for the ad hoc, or
Different meeting.
It's been a long week.
I bet.
Where the breed team did propose, or present, actually, I presented for them their whole plans for energy independence for the city of Oroville. So it is starting with this project here and it is, as they said, completely independent. If the rest of the plant doesn't happen, if they don't get their funding, if something else happens, this still exists. And then they will be able to provide power to all of their neighbors. So they've been making agreements with the different industrial companies down there and the savings that they're looking at providing is significant. And it does also, they are oversizing it from what the, from what the, they need right now, but we're also considering providing power to the south side area, the whole, the whole south side area. And then any new industrial companies that may come in down and around that area would also be providing that power. If, if everything works out and they're able to do the other project and they can, they can build their biomass plant. And I know three of you were there, right? That the, so this is, it's a solution for, for forest management and for wildfire reduction. And I won't go through the whole entire hour-long thing that we did the other night, but there are 387,000 acres of dead wood in the forests up here.
That's right.
387,000 acres that have to be pulled out. It's all just tinder for a new fire. So without removing those, then we're subject to further, further wildfires, higher insurance, people losing their homes and all the other stuff. And then, you know, part of the, part of the presentation we talked about last night is actually the modern technology and the cleanliness of what comes out of the flu. And so the, the manufacturer of the filtration system brought a sample. And by the way, for those of you there, that one thing that we saw, there's a thousand of them that go into the, into the, into the filtration system. So what comes out of there is 99.9, or sorry.
Yeah.
99.9% purified or clean air coming out of the top. So if you take out, if you consider the amount of ash, particulates, methane that comes out of a, out of a wildfire. This is a much better solution. And so
Yeah.
what they're, what they're building will satisfy 4,000 acres a year. We have 387,000 acres that need to be also
Endless supply.
Yeah. And that, and I got that
Endless supply.
I got that from the Butte County Fire Safe Council that, you know, that I worked with a bit to get some information. They, they showed up with this. AQMD was there. We've already engaged with AQMD, Environmental Health, Cal EPA. Neither Cal EPA or DTSC really have much to do with that project, but we just wanted to have everybody in the loop. And so we feel like it's a pretty, it's a really great project for the, for the community. And then, so as we go out, so every customer will have a flat rate, so no, no peak hours, no additional cost because you become a high user at any one point. And that goes for our industrial companies as well. So the south side area, if we are able to do that, we're still working out whether or not, you know, the math works. But if we're able to do the whole south side area as well, that means that entire disadvantaged community then gets a flat rate of, of power. And then it's a pretty good economic development hook because anyone else that comes down into that area down there will also enjoy this. And then there's a whole other thing that we didn't even talk about in that meeting about district heating, where you take the heat off of the, off of the machine and you run it through a pipe into an industrial complex. And instead of running an air conditioner, you run a chiller. And it runs, and it, so the heat is converted into cooling, so it drastically reduces the amount of electricity that's needed to run the operation. And it, and then they can sell the rest of the electricity to them at, at a much lower price. Brian Wong was present on Tuesday night. He gave some little testimony himself about, about that. And so anyway, we are going to be doing some more meetings. It was, we were invited to come to the December OCDC meeting, which may be held at the convention center. And that one will be advertised more broadly than what we advertised this one this last week. And the last week, we, we really sort of were targeting the south side community. So we, we just sent it out to distribution list from, by two people that have like a, like a heavy distribution list down in there. And then it was, if you saw, it was on the news the night before. It was in the paper ahead of time. So it was pretty heavily advertised, actually. And we actually did have maybe about 85 people, 79 people signed the, the guest list. So it was a really good turnout. And there'll be many more meetings coming. The, the public is going to be very well informed about this. There'll be lots of opportunities to people to express their concerns, but also hear about the, the project and what's going on and the benefits that the city will enjoy in the future.
So how, how would we have heard about the meeting?
Well, you know, I'm here at the beginning of the meeting, I realized that I did not send an invitation to the whole body of the planning commission. I did send one to the, to the ODBA. I sent one to the, to the Rotary I spoke at the Rotary Club. They'd asked me and then when I was there, I told them about the meeting. And then oh, Chamber of Commerce. So I was really, I was really trying to just, my focus was to, for the south side community to, for them to hear it. But this one, the next one will be much more widely publicized and there will be multiple opportunities to come and hear the presentation again.
I, I personally got a personal invitation only because there was a sound system requirement that was needed, so I was asked to bring my sound system.
So, and even the concerns, I think you handled the people extremely well. You just gave everyone appreciate that because, you know, it was a great you know, a bright future.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think it went over really well. We did have those people that voiced our position and that meeting was for them.
Sure.
You know, to let and then, but also so that we could hear what their opposition is and make sure that we're mitigating that in the future. And I, I do feel like we are that's the path that, this is on anyways.
So my takeaway from it, I actually learned something from the opposition. They were talking about cancer rates and I looked up cancer rates and we do actually have an extremely high cancer rate. We are, we are high in our area. A few percent's a few percent. I mean, here and there. And when you look at all the fires that we have around here, the small particulates and what's in the smoke and everything else, that could easily have something to do with it, especially with the lungs and, and such. Well, I'm just saying.
No, 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 I agree with you.
I would, I would rather burn 4,000 acres a year through that facility
Yes.
than, that's all I was alluding to. I wasn't saying this is going to cure anything.
Do we also have a high prevalence of COPD? Butte County has one of the highest. So I'm just saying that off the true view.
Oh, 100%.
Yeah.
100%. All I'm just saying is that they're, they're going to take 4,000 acres a year and burn it and we're only going to have .01% of contaminants. I'm, I'm down for it.
Because it's also there's it kicks off with a, with a little bit of burning, but it's actually a gasification, gasification process. So they're, they're basically like moving right past the burn point and going until they're just turning it into a gas. And then they're capturing that gas and then they could do something else with it and
I personally just like triggering Patrick by saying burn something.
He does. Yeah.
COPD, it takes your breath away.
Okay, so we're done? We're adjourned? No?
No, that's good.
Okay.
We did fine.
I'm messing with you now. I guess we're done.